Kyle and Ailey Gerain. Public hearing.
Oh, we gotta approve the minutes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need a motion to approve the line. Twenty-four minutes.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, okay. Okay, we're ready for Gerain. Okay.
I'm Anthony Sisliano, I'm a surveyor for the property owner, Kyle Truitt.
So, this is a public hearing, anybody here that wants to speak about this? This is on Forest Road? No? No people want to talk? Okay. Public hearing is closed.
That's what it is.
Okay, now we'll get to you in a little while. Okay, next meeting, Joseph Vida. Joseph Vida, anybody here representing him? No?
I have questions. What are they doing? Why are they subdividing these?
Well, if he's not here... If they're not here, it's just a simple subdivision of our entity. If they were here, we'd get them.
Yeah, so you guys don't know from last month what they're up to?
They didn't show last month either.
No, so it's out of here, so, okay.
Yeah, we'll just hope on second call and if they show up, we can...
Yeah, we can take them later.
I know there's a lot of traffic or somewhere, you know, on that side.
Took me like fifteen minutes to get there.
It might be back, okay.
How's your water main?
Yeah.
You have water main? Next public hearing, okay, next public hearing, Stage Door, Real Estate Holdings.
So Mike Riley, this is Joey Raci. This is Stage Door Manor, which is what the number is. Um, proposing is roughly a ninety-seven by sixty-two foot theater building in the area. I have piloted it. Some parking around it and access. Also print out Joe's renderings, just to give everybody an idea.
Okay, is there anybody here that wants to speak on this matter? That's good, nobody? Public hearing is closed. Okay. So go to the whole business. Polygon Excavating, request site plan, special thorough review, structure, garage, and repairs. Five point two-one acres. Lenwild Road.
Randy Lawson for Polygon. Okay, so this is the five point one acre parcel. Post is to build an eighty by one hundred and sixty foot double building. Or less than, uh, this area of the lot, access would be right off of Lenwild Road, right here. And this is the yard and the idea is that the contractor has ordered equipment, work on it, uh, swum materials for the building. That's basically it. Got an excavated business. Site's graded, we'll be, we have to finish the swum, swum water for it on to be right here in the front, and it'll exit to a twenty-four inch holder on the county road, right here. That's basically it, very simple.
Anybody on the board have anything to say about this?
How old is the elevations where the building is going to be?
Circle?
Elevations.
What do you want elevations doing?
Well, uh, it's, it goes from the road, probably, um, what do you got, about thirty foot?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's got, uh, from the highway, there's, uh, ten, twenty. Yeah, thirty to this, to the front, to the front, yep. And then will be cut into the hillside, this is all graded down fairly steeply, will be cut into the hillside, and it goes up another, uh, I'll just say fifteen feet or so.
It's all shale.
It's all shale, yeah, it's gonna be, uh, cut that, hammer it out, or blast it, I'm not sure which, uh, boat.
Okay. So, um, we need a set of public hearing for the next, for next call. Okay, lead agency, it's an unlisted action.
So you guys wanna do coordinated review, I think it's pretty straightforward.
I don't think it needs to just to circle, pretty simple.
We do need the two thirty-nine.
Yep, I was gonna say, so do them, uh, one at a time. Uh, the first motion would be, uh, lead agency for an unlisted action, uncoordinated.
So should we do that now, before the pub, uh, before the public hearing?
Yeah, it doesn't really matter, but I should cover it.
Okay, so we need a motion to take lead agency. Motion. Second? All in favor?
Who's the first?
All. What else do we have to do tonight, anything else?
Schedule the public hearing, I guess we'll be next meeting.
Yeah, public hearing will be next meeting.
Um, and also...
Hold on, we need to decide who's voting tonight.
One, two, three, six, now. Nope, I'm missing one right over there.
Yeah.
We're looking.
No, we only need two. Need three.
Yeah, yeah, if you're gonna have five voting, if somebody's not voting tonight, we have to figure out who's not voting.
Or if you're in charge, tell somebody.
Huh? Yeah.
They can vote.
Are you an alternate?
Yes, yes, three of them are. So you got Cody, Moish, and Mike, they're all three minutes, that's five. So Cody will vote tonight?
Okay. Okay. Okay, so that's it, that's me, next...
No? No.
Back to the thirty-nine?
It's two thirty-nine.
Okay.
Sorry, we gotta strike that.
Okay. So we need a, we need another motion for what, is it?
Two thirty-nine.
Okay, yeah.
We need to get the two thirty-nine, uh, review, to Cali Road. Hopefully we'll have that for the next meeting, or we'll have to schedule the public hearing for next, our next meeting.
You gotta make a motion, who, who's gonna make the motion for the two thirty-nine?
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Who's second?
I'll second.
Second? All in favor? Okay.
And now a motion for, to set the public hearing.
Okay, now we need a motion for them to come to the next meeting for a public hearing. Who's making the motion?
Most.
Okay, second? Okay, all in favor? Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, can you do the two thirty-nine?
You do it and send it to me, then I send it in.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, ready? Okay, so now we got Gerain subdivision. So, since there was no objections at the public hearing, uh, we gotta take lead agency. Uh, so we need a motion for lead agency.
Motion.
Second? Okay, all in favor? Okay. Negative declaration, motion?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
You guys are moving fast tonight, here.
Okay, okay, guys. So, got it.
And then what was the second one?
Negde.
Negde.
There's no, uh, everything fits together, there's no, there's no problems or anything?
No.
Because you were, I think before you mentioned, uh, that's one side is less, less pronounced or something?
Less.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah. Advocate, advocate.
Did you guys do a formal motion for approval? I don't think you did.
Formal motion.
Okay, motion for approval.
Motion.
Second? All in favor? Okay.
Hold on, who's the second?
You were the second, right?
Just put my name down, this one right now. We'll be done here in half hour.
Thank you, Chris.
Got it.
Have a good night.
Joseph Vida, anybody here for Joseph Vida?
So, uh, you have to do the public hearing first, have them kind of present what the project is.
Okay. All right, so this is, uh, this is a public hearing for Joseph Vida, two-lot subdivision.
It's a lot in Brooklyn, isn't it?
Cross Farms Road. Okay, so you gotta speak, speak to the public, if anybody has an interest, tell them what you wanna do.
So what we have is a, approximately a ninety acre parcel, that's on one side of the road, it's got an acre and a half, and the other side of the road is a little hook.
I'm sorry, can you just state your name for the recording?
Good, Mike McGuire, Attorney in Liberty, P L S nine four five, Liberty, New York.
Robert Lance Rayland, so there.
Thank you.
So we've got a ninety acre parcel on one side of the road, the other side of the road is an acre and a half hook. What we wanna do is we wanna subdivide off the acre and a half, and annex it to the property on that side of the road, which is currently the location of the Formaggio Cheese Plant. Uh, there'll be no building on that one point five acres, they're really just doing a lot improvement, lot line improvement, so that we get the setbacks that we need for the additions that they're contemplating putting on. So be no improvements to the properties, no, uh, water issues, no sewer issues, no traffic issues, nothing changes, just lot line improvement.
Okay.
Question?
Yes, just say your name, please.
Bill Nigel. So I've, I've got the lot on, I live on Hilldale Road, and Formaggio's is to my north, but the Cross Farm Road is to my south. So how does that connect with Formaggio? It's a Cross Farm Road's address, but if you trace the plot, the, the lot comes all the way around to Hilldale Road and then crosses over.
Could you show them on a map?
I was gonna say, the only thing we have is the survey, was that ever considered as a survey?
No, no, I don't think so.
Yeah, you can come up if you want, take a look at the map, put it right down on your table, so you can see.
Uh, this is, uh, the property here, it comes across, this is Hilldale Road.
Okay.
Your property's down here somewhere, this is Formaggio up here.
My property is right across from the dam.
Okay, the dam is right down here somewhere.
Okay.
Right, this is Hilldale Pond.
Yes.
The property across the street, I think they're called LTJ Properties, that's, it's a large piece, it's like a hundred acres, a big chunk of it, right?
Yeah, oh, the whole thing in here, yes.
Well, yeah, it's on this side of the road, one little corner that comes across the road right here. All right, that's the acre and a half there.
Oh, I see.
So...
So it's in between the one house that's between me and the Formaggio, please?
Yes, it's, it's between, uh, you and Formaggio. And all they're doing is they're, they're gonna buy this piece and just add it to Formaggio's, they're not really doing a subdivision, they're just improving his lot, giving it a little more acreage.
Well, is the long-term plan to then expand Formaggio's, 'cause there's a lot of noise coming from them already?
He's not gonna build on this piece. There's not gonna make no building. See, there's a drainage system right here.
There's not gonna be more of their parking lot.
I don't know whether, right now, they're just adding this, they're adding a lot of stuff.
Anything like that?
Hang on a second? I don't know.
Uh, I think that's a building department issue, or, you know, it's a site plan issue.
Okay. Excuse me, sir? I'm sorry, we need to have a formal record for the public hearing of, of the questions, and you're having a conversation, they're having a conversation, we're not picking up the official word, right? So, was there a specific question you had, or to you for the recording, just express what, what is it you guys are talking about?
Well, I live near enough that I hear noise from this factory sometimes all through the night, and if they expand closer to me, it's not gonna get quiet. So I'm trying to verify that this is not being meant to expand either their parking, which could include semis going in and out of there, I don't know, I mean, it might give them another big entrance, I'm not sure what...
Which property is yours?
I'm, I'm right down here.
You don't border this, you're south of that, you're right, you're down by the dam you said?
I probably do, well, I'm, I'm, if, I don't know where the house is.
Who are these people here, East Coast?
There's a house up here somewhere, and my, my land, go to sixteen acres running kind of football shape.
But you must be south of here a little bit.
A little bit, yeah. But close enough to hear the, the noise of the place, which, right now is okay, I guess, but if it, if it expands closer, that could be a real headache for me.
So, Mr. Vida, are you Mr. Vida?
No.
No. I'm rather loud, I'm a Lance Rayland.
Okay.
Mrs. McGuire is representing.
You guys are representing?
I represent purchaser of the land, who's purchasing it from Mr. Vida.
So I'm going to...
So purchaser is Formaggio Cheese?
Yes.
Okay. So, well, let's finish with the public hearing, and then we'll pivot to a general discussion, sorry.
Okay.
So, he, they're saying they're not gonna build on it, it's in the record, and you, and that's your neighbor across the road, it's all in the record, okay? And, uh, nothing's gonna happen until, it's gotta be all typed up, and I, I make sure that your question is answered, you're not building on it.
Yes, at this time, you're just attaching it.
Right, right, so, so if there's nobody else that wants to speak, the public hearing is closed. Okay?
I think we're, don't go anywhere, 'cause I think we're at, you're in the regular part of the...
Yeah, we're running it up again, that was a little early. So...
It's your call.
So what are we...
All right, so, yeah, so Helen and I were looking at the survey provided, and typically for subdivision like this, we would have like a full subdivision map that gets filed with the county.
Yeah, it's the same thing that we have here.
Yes.
But we don't have the entire property, I guess is what I'm...
Right, it's a hundred and seven acres, it's over here.
Right, but normally you would have a map that shows both parcels, and, because when you file this with the county, they're not able to see a full...
A full picture of what, what the parcels are. Um, so my, my thought was, I, I think we are gonna need that for approval. Um, so with that in mind, um, once you close the public hearing, you've got sixty-two days in which to vote, and theoretically, you can come with the subdivision map and get it done next month, but it might make sense to leave the public hearing open, just in case it takes more than a month or two to get that done.
You just wanna sketch what exists over here.
Yeah, just more of a formalized, yeah, that we get filed.
Maybe I'll put it up in here someplace.
No, you're gonna show, you're gonna show the property, you're gonna show the doodle line going around it, so we know where it is.
This is the doodle line right here.
Yep.
Okay. And this is the property that he's talking about, it's a big chunk of property, it's a big chunk of property. Hundred acres.
Right.
This is the only thing down across the road, it's got the, uh, drainage system across the middle of it, so he has no use for it, he approached them and asked them when they buy it, so...
Yeah, I, I just, I, I feel like we need an official, like, site plan, don't just stick it up here on the top of the, of the survey, we need an access.
Showing the remainder, you, you actually wanna measure that hundred and seven acres for this acre and a half?
Not measure it, but...
Well, yeah, I mean, I can, I can sketch it up here, this whole property, and then comes up.
You're gonna, 'cause the county's not gonna let you file it like this. We just don't want the county to reject it, and then go back to the back.
Right, typically, with something like this, when you have a hundred acres, and you have a little thing like that, they don't ask you to survey it or get involved, you know?
No, well, I asked them for a survey.
Yeah, if you use a tax man.
Yeah, that's what I said, I'll set that up in this corner here, and just see, and see what it is.
I... What do you think, I'm just...
I'll show their whole property with the...
Is that enough on something else?
No, it should be down there, what, what we see it.
Well, I, I can't pick the hundred acres here, because...
Well, I don't need the pond, whatever the difference is.
Well, they, they need it for their stuff.
Who?
Uh, Formaggio.
Yeah, they need it, but we didn't, when you follow your thing, they don't need this, you know? It's not, you know, it's all from I do here, this is the pond. I'd rather see your land and see the pond, am I right?
I, I agree with you, I can, I just, I wanna understand why we can't get an actual span that shows both parcels and what you're giving to each...
Well, like I said, if I take the tax man, but appears all parts on this, the piece coming out.
There's no part of this property, appears property belongs to...
No, I'll, I'll box this out and make a reference to it here, this is what it is. Uh, I'll show this piece.
Let's talk to him, try to get tired.
What does the law require in terms of an actual subdivision plan?
Most of the time, the county waves, it points out just a little corner coming up, a large piece, they don't ask you to do the whole thing, just make a sketch.
Can we get a tax map?
Yeah, touch.
Would that be adequate?
I'll show all of the parcels on a tax map. I'll show the whole tax map, but fit in this corner, that's what I'm saying, I could just put the whole thing in there, and you could see where the rest of the property is, it's a big piece across the road.
And one of the things I'd like to just make sure, is there any, on this hundred acres, that there's someone to there, is there anything on deeds with easements, or anything?
Nothing, I'm aware, I've read their deeds and...
Oh, and the road separated.
Yeah, the road separates all of them.
There's one easement right in here, between the drainage.
That's what the county has.
Can they drill a well on this property?
I have no idea.
Is that an option for them? 'Cause I know they're always looking.
They're trying to get water somewhere, but I, I don't know that that's...
They can, they're not in the water district.
So that's an option with this one?
They can drill a well, it's not the water district.
If they're in the district, they can drill a well, that's not the water district.
So they can drill, uh, they can drill a well, maybe that's why they want that piece for property?
They want the property because of setbacks, because of the, the ongoing construction that's going on over here.
Well, they're fully got the construction, other than, shouldn't have no, you shouldn't need any more property, because you gave me approvals already for what's going on. We're not asking for any more test value for it, do I?
This guy actually approached Formaggio.
Yeah, I hear it, but I'm just saying, you're telling me that he wants it because you gotta have the setbacks, you know? This project is already approved, okay? So you don't need anything for this project. Okay, so, you can't tell me you need it because of the setbacks, for what you're doing there, because you already got the approvals for all that. If you didn't have the approvals, you wouldn't be building right now. So, okay, so, he's buying this property because he needs more parking, he needs more whatever he's gonna do with it, so, that's the way, you know, don't tell me you need it because you got, uh, you know, you need it for this project, 'cause that's not true. Tell me you need it for parking, do you need more parking, this way it's true, it's on the paperwork that went in, 'cause right now, you're asking for this, and later on, you're gonna be parking cars there, and I'm gonna make sure in the things here, that we put this non-issued property here, so if you don't want nothing to do with it...
I know he has trouble with parking.
I'm just saying, I'm gonna make a, I'm gonna make a motion, so you can't use this piece of property. I'll put down your thing, but if you're gonna come in and say you want it for parking, just say that's what you want it for.
He doesn't know, he may not know what they're...
Why, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, that he's, they're telling you that's what you want it for.
Maybe he needs to go back to the client and ta, and, and say, listen, what are you gonna do with it?
'Cause right now, you're telling the neighbor, and they're not gonna do nothing with it.
That's what the clients told us, that they had no plans, so, you know?
Okay.
That's what he said.
Yeah, would you put a deed restriction on this?
Before they do anything, they gotta come to you guys anyway.
Well, not if they want it for parking.
Why don't you talk to your clients, so this doesn't get to be six months down the road, they're not...
We can't, we can't tell, we just put a key restriction.
Well, we can make it, so if they wanna go put a parking on or anything, they gotta come back to the, uh, back on the board.
Yeah, come back.
They could have done that anyway.
Yeah, you'll have to, you'll have to go back. What about this two thirty-nine review, to Cali Road?
Well, no, they're not gonna put a driveway there.
They're just gonna tax it, 'cause they're under stuff, they already have the driveway.
Doesn't matter, it's still in action.
They'll have to do a two thirty-nine review, because it's on the Cali Road.
Yeah, so I would, do you know the person at the county?
Sure.
Yeah, I'd probably give him a call and just see what his thoughts are as far as having a map that's gonna be...
Either be seen as...
I've done a, a dozen of them for Chris, and that's usually what he wants, a tax man, just show me the thing, and where's this one? And, and, you know, she asked for an approximately...
Make it out most of the way, yes, yes.
So he is laying here, not just...
You make it out most of the way afterwards, for...
What?
This is you, actually, the way...
Let's make a motion for a two, that, the two, two thirty-nine, somebody make the motion.
Motion.
Okay, at second? Okay, all in favor? Okay.
And just for the record, if it's a type two action, obviously, you don't have to do anything, it's going to accept it, so...
Right, right.
If you come back two thirty-nine, and then just some sort of sketch plan, just show the two, entirety of the two parcels, doesn't have to be surveyed or...
Um, sir, do you wanna just close the, the oral public hearing, and leave the written open, that's what we've been here?
I was gonna open the Polygo.
Yeah?
Yeah, do it open for now.
Yeah, I'm just clarifying, just so you've got the time, you, and, just, it shouldn't obviously, you know, next meeting, you should be able to block on that, it shouldn't be a big deal, but I just wanna make sure everyone's got enough time on that, so...
No, that's nothing to do with it.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Yep.
Not sure. Only, no, call your office, okay?
Okay, that's, uh, Stage Door, Real Estate Holdings, wants to build a theater.
Yes, I'm Mike Riley, this is Joey Raci. I'm Cindy Deener, Stage Door. So last time, when we came, I had the theater a little further back towards the property, and I required variance, I moved it forward, so I don't need a variance, and then we're actually removing the court, so that we standard the lot coverage, so you don't need any variances. The other thing that came up was the parking, so I've kind of clouded the area over here that they use for parking, right now, they use Mr. McGee's, how do you say his name? McGee's property for over four parking, but Cindy also owns the strip right here, so I've placed a, a note on the plan here, that, right now it's wooded, she doesn't wanna unnecessarily clear it, but if for some reason, Mr. Maggie didn't let her park there anymore, then she would construct a, a parking area there to handle the additional cars.
Where, where we have, um, we have all that property on the bottom?
Yeah, all over here.
That's, that, it's only six days out of the year.
It's a significant area.
Okay, so...
That's about it, I don't think anybody's got any questions?
We do move cars down there for sure, we can do it now.
And I added notes on the plan, just describing what I just described, about parking.
Okay. So, what we need now, we need a negde.
Mike, it's over four thousand square feet now, right? Originally, it was like...
No, it's always been about six, six thousand square feet, nothing.
Okay, so it's over four thousand, so it's on this?
Yeah, we didn't change the size of it.
We already did that.
So we're good with, um, I think we did a negde at the last meeting?
No.
No.
No, we...
Okay, so lead agency, unlisted, so if you guys, uh, don't have any questions or concerns, I guess, Ken, did you have any questions or concerns?
No, we'll do a final review with Mark, with Mike's last plan.
Okay. So, I mean, unless you guys have any other questions or concerns, the first step would be a negative declaration under secret. So I mean, unless you guys have any other questions or concerns, the first step would be a negative declaration under secret.
Okay, so. So we need, we need a motion. Motion for a negative deck deck. Motion. At second? All in favor? Okay.
So I did prepare a formal approval resolution. It just has the standard conditions. There weren't any site-specific conditions.
Joe, move a little bit and you're blocking the camera.
No.
Right behind you.
Behind you.
Were there any site-specific conditions?
Really, the parking was, now is not an issue anymore, and it's interior where they're doing it. And I don't see any reason to hold it up. Do you guys, anybody else? Nope, okay, well, it's fine.
Do you guys wanna condition it upon everybody getting invited to the living cutting?
Getting invited to the.
Invited to the living cutting.
More important, come invited to the show.
Okay.
Which will darken the moon tonight if he finish.
Don't eat.
Nice pot.
Okay, so we need a formal motion to approve it.
Motion.
Okay, second, all in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, HCS Resorts, Longwood Hotel. Okay, I'm sorry. Shell Drake Carmel Road Properties. Additional approval, site plan review, or manufacturer.
So we were back, we were at the July meeting. It seemed like everybody was willing to entertain an approval on this, but there's no great resolutions or anything. So since then, Allen and staff has come up with it, circulated it to everybody, and that's what we're hoping to do today.
Yep. Good, so just for the, just for the record. This is a type one action under secret, so we wanna make sure that we have a complete environmental record before you guys do any kind of conditional approvals. So in front of you, you have part three of the long form DAF. You may recall that we went through part two, I think it was around February, March, somewhere around there, when you guys were, you know, deciding whether or not they needed to do a whole full-blown environmental impact statement. You guys decided no, but you went through all the different categories of where there could be potential impacts. So there's a detailed narrative that comes along with the part three explaining why you guys think it's not gonna have a significant impact on the environment. So I'm not gonna go through it in detail, other than just to say, you know, for the record and the minutes, that there were several different reports and technical studies that were submitted by the applicant, reviewed by the town's technical consultants, to arrive at the negative declaration. And that included a wetland report, a wetlands map, a traffic impact study, stormwater pollution prevention plan, wildlife habitat assessment, hydrogeologic evaluation, and a sewer report on the package. So that is normally what would have been included in an environmental impact statement. You guys just did it as a, as appendices to the environmental assessment. Does everybody follow? All right, so any questions on the part three narrative, the negative declaration? Otherwise, we can move right to the resolution, and I can read it for the record if you'd like.
Right, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Where is this located?
This is on the corner of.
Further down Carmel Jacobs Road. It's an intersection of Laba and Carmel Jacobs.
So this is on the, this is where 52 meets Carmel?
No, no, no.
From that way, yeah.
Past you.
And this isn't a public hearing. There was a public hearing on this. I think it was back in January, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, so. So do you guys want me to just read the negative to the record, just so that memorializes? So this proposed action is located on Carmel Jacobs Road in the Ammon Block Shell Drake, and entails construction of an eighty-six unit manufactured form development with associated common amenities and recreational facilities on ninety-three point three eight acres. The Town of Fallsburg Planning Board began its review with the submission of a site plan application and sketch plan back in March of 2023, so it's been almost two years, with the most recent plan set updated on or about June of 2025. It says short, but it should be a long environmental assessment form, oh, sorry, a short environmental assessment form was originally submitted, and was subsequently updated to a long environmental assessment form as part of a full secret package submitted in December of 2023. And whereas the planning board classified the project as a type one action, declared its intent to service the agency for a coordinated review back in January. Need agency notices were circulated. The planning board reviewed and completed part two of the long environmental assessment form on March tenth, 2025, and thoroughly discussed the requirements of secret and other information in the record with respect to the project at the April, May, June, and July planning meetings. So if you guys are okay, you can go ahead and do a motion for a negative declaration unless you have any questions.
Okay, motion for a deck deck. Motion. Okay, second? All in favor?
Erv, you just have to make a motion also to close the written portion of the public hearing, because that was still.
Okay, need a motion to close the written part of the public hearing. Motion. Second? Okay, all in favor?
Give me one second, guys. I know you have a minute, you don't have a hard time connecting, so I'll talk.
Has everything been taken care of with the paperwork for committing the bonding for the sewer? And has, did you get the blessing from the town engineer about the project?
Yes, we're doing a final, one last final review on the project. I think Allen's firm is looking at the treatment plan to make sure that that's followed through, that's gonna be stamped by another licensed engineer to audit for that. Water has to go through the health department, requires us to keep track of that as it goes through the process. And Mike's getting a final review on his, his plans, but we're satisfied with what we've had so far. We put some light in the direction.
So why don't I go through some of the site-specific conditions, because there are a number of them. And then if there's anything that we left out, we want added or included, we can add that. Is that sound okay?
It's more or less between engineer and Delaware has to have all the answers. I'm looking to make sure that this is not gonna be a problem two years down the road, that everything is in order. Because there seem too many of these systems that are making over by homeowners association or whatever, and it just falls apart. And I want to make sure that everything is, you know, it's in your hands. I, you know, I think it's, everything is good to go, but the blessing is from Delaware and then Kent. And these are the things that are very important to make sure.
I was gonna say, the things that I've seen that has happened, which are correct. So we have, let's say we have everything set, and they have a sewer plant operator that's licensed to this state of New York Department of Plant Testing is all done. What happens is that if that owner is associated and it's not solvent, don't stay solvent, and he doesn't get paid, and then that's where everything starts to break down.
Or the property gets split.
Yeah.
And then you're starting with a whole new thing, and what I'm trying to say is, is there any way of putting in various things? So that if something else happens, we're caught, if you know what I mean? I know it's inevitable, you can't control everything, but we, we need to make sure that if we somehow control, number one, bonding, there has to be quite a bit of bonding, gotta forbid something, something happens, and go from there.
Do the conditions go with the property, the property itself's conditions go with it?
I think it's, the answer would be it depends, because a lot of the conditions are for building permits or certificate of occupancy. So it'd have to be something that was more in line, I think, with a deed restriction or anything.
And the problem is, is that it's a, it's a permitted use, it's not a special form of use, so it's hard to attach, you know, sort of annual conditions for that. I mean, right now, I have as a condition that prior issuance of any certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall provide evidence that the certified wastewater treatment plant operator has been contracted to perform all required maintenance, testing, and operation of the package sewage treatment plan in accordance with this thing's permit issued by the D E C. I mean, I think what would make you feel better is have some sort of an ongoing condition, almost like the camp inspections, where it's like every year, they have to prove that, okay, we have a contract in place with the operator, maybe it's a copy of any annual inspections that the D E C has, you know, performed with highlighted deficiencies. I don't know if that is a task.
I think it's all regulated with D E C, because I know we had this discussion, I think, Aiden's, there's bonds, regulations, everything covers.
The problem is, is like, some county board of health with these things, they're so inundated that they're they'll show up next year. I don't think there's much that we could, what I've seen is I've seen a developer that makes a beautiful place with a beautiful plant. It's got a good operator, and then it goes, it's sold out, goes to a homeowners association. Go find who's, who's that. Oh, the pump is broke, the operator tells them, oh, we got, we got another three weeks to go, it's Labor Day, don't worry about it. And an operator, if there's anything wrong, and they don't fix it, operator can lose his license if he doesn't call the D E C hotline number. But, you know, I don't see how we could be the police of what's gonna happen. May happen, two years from now. You know, I don't like it, but just, I don't see.
It's something where you have to have faith in the regulatory agency.
You gotta have enough to ask the inspection process every year, or something to make sure for every six months.
That's the D E C.
Is that, is that something that we can attach as a condition, or the, or the building department to either, you know, request records annually?
I think if, if the applicant's willing to accept it, I mean, it could, but I mean, I.
Well, you would have to have. Yeah, you would have to have somebody from the Fallsburg Sewer Department go there and do an inspection, and get paid for doing the inspection. Just to say it's working.
I mean, they're required, the test results are required periodically. They miss a test result, the D E C sends them a letter, and they go do the inspection.
It's not a perfect system.
Well, you could require the applicant to, to submit paperwork, right? Not an inspection or whatever, but, you know, submit proof that they have.
Well, let's do that. If we can do it, what do you say, Mike?
I don't want to do that. I mean, we can CC the town on all the inspection paperwork, so they get a copy of everything the D E C gets, that's not unreasonable, I think.
Typically, the guys who run these plants are, are town guys anyway. You just, you don't put out an ad, a paper for a plant operator. You gotta have years of experience to get the license. You gotta work at a town plant or something like that. It's not just a private guy who knows.
No, no, it's a licensed.
It could be a retired guy, I agree with you, who still holds his license, but most of the time, these guys hire somebody within the town that they live in, or a town that works at a sewer plant already who has the license. Because again, you have to, this, this just doesn't, you know, you don't get a license, one, two, three. It takes a couple of years, and you gotta do like an internship, and then you get your license, so.
But the deal is, code enforcement wouldn't know what they're looking at unless they see it running down the street.
A hundred percent, but like Erv said, that's the, the guy who gets hired there, if he sees something wrong, he could lose his license to the D E C. So if he doesn't report it, then, you know, he's the one who's gonna get in trouble. Yeah, me walking in there, I don't know what goes on. I know, yeah, the stuff is flowing, oh, well.
Well, I think that's why the D E C regulates it.
But it'll be, it'll be the same, they'll follow with their, with their water system too. They'll probably hire somebody from the town who has a license to oversee, because it's a public, a public water service, because it's servicing a whole development. I have a guy who's retired from the village of Monticello, who does my development. I pass him every morning coming in. He does tests two times a day, once in the morning, once in the afternoon, and those are all submitted to the Department of Health. The water is, the D E C, the same thing, you know?
I just wanna make sure.
I hear what you're saying, I think you.
We're running into where there's gonna be more and more of these systems.
These packages.
And if we don't have some kind of vehicle to control this, they're gonna say, you know what, call it code enforcement, let code enforcement do that. What, what's the good of it? You need, you need a structure of how to control everything with these, these packaged plants.
Hold on a second, I'm just working on my words. Okay, so I think we have it, but that's kind of like at the end of the list. So is there, if I start at the top, and we'll go through them one by one, and make sure you're okay with them, and then we can see if there's anything worth seeing. Does that sound all right?
Sounds good.
Okay, so standard conditions are standard conditions. Site-specific conditions. Prior signature by the planning board chairman, the applicant shall add a note to the plans confirming that a portion of the seventeen acres to be transferred from tax lot two point three to tax lot seven, containing the New York State D E C regulated freshwater wetlands and a hundred-foot check zone shall remain understood. You have an issue with that, Mike?
No.
Anything else prior to the planning board signature? Because the next set of conditions are prior to any land disturbance or building permits being issued.
Well, wasn't something about planting trees in a certain place?
Yep, I think that's, that's on here. So prior to issuance of any land disturbance or building permits, the applicant has to provide evidence that they have secured all necessary stormwater, wastewater discharge, and water supply permits from applicable regulatory agencies, including D O H and D E C. Is there any that we're forgetting, Ken? That's pretty much it, right? Stormwater, wastewater, and water supply.
All of that stuff could be handled too, with Ken and I, with the pre-construction being, before, you know.
Yep, we just wanna make sure prior to issuing any permits for actual construction, that those permits are in place. That's kind of standard. The next one under there is that the applicant shall execute an agreement approved by the planning board attorney and contribute escrow payments to a transportation improvement fund or other fund deemed appropriate by the Town of Fallsburg, representing the project's proportional share of the costs associated with implementation of traffic mitigation measures for the Route fifty-two corridor in a final amount to be determined by the town's traffic consultant. Do you wanna just give sort of the elevator versions to each of? I know we've talked about this before, with the traffic mitigation fund and what it's for.
Sure, so we're actually trying to streamline and simplify. Initially, the plan was to do an agreement, and at some point in the future, traffic is gonna require that the light has to go in, but we're working on setting up a call with D O T just to see if the light in turn lane can get put in in the near future, like six months, five months. That way, the costs are set, we know who the players are, and we can just get it done. And that's after a number of meetings with attorneys for the applicants that basically said they don't wanna be held out in perpetuity, waiting on D O T to say to build it. So we thought that would be a more practical way to handle it. It's just get the go-ahead from D O T, and then move forward, put the light and lane in, and you'll have it there in advance. So that's the only piece we're waiting on, is D O T to give us the thumbs up.
So I guess before I get into the conditions about during construction and prior to issuance of certificates of occupancy, is this the appropriate time to add, shall execute a developer's agreement? Because that would address the, the bonding and the other things that we were talking about. I don't think I included that as a reasonable condition. Is that something that we want? How, how would you normally, like, determine what the bond is and make sure there's enough to cover? Is that usually done in the developers?
Is there percentages? Does the, whether the contractor is, does he have, is there a cost of the project? Well, you know, you gotta have some kind of idea.
Yeah, I think that was what Paul brought up, specifically the treatment plan is the concern.
You got the water treatment, well, all. All right, so, so Mike, you can put together, what we got doing that treatment plan, put together an estimate of the cost along with the wellhouse.
Okay.
Send that in for my review, and I gotta put it back, and be part of the.
So shall attain a performance bond, is that the right terminology, an amount to be determined by the town engineer?
It's not a performance bond, it's a, you can even be escrow money, it's a bond that will cover the cost, should the dollar.
So attain a bond for deposit money, escrow?
I would keep it just like. Yeah, because I know sometimes with municipal finance, if you start holding money in escrow like that, it can get a little sloppy and concerning.
So shall attain a bond, an amount to be determined by the town engineer consultation?
So Mike, add that thirty percent for weight rate requirements.
Yes, Kim, listen, I know we're getting a lot on here, but is there other townships, Orange County, that already, if you have somebody, if it's some network, that you can speak to them, what do they do? How are they controlling everything with this project and get some kind of? How would they control when they're considering this project and get some kind of, um, idea where you're at? If you know what I mean.
Basically.
Instead of us going through the learning curve and then backing somebody in the corner, have an idea of how they're, how it's, how it's being operated, you know, at, at other counties. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Now, that's the, uh, that's the issue. They have a good outcome this time out, so you're forgetting. Although what?
What about Pedaloo Giro Thompson?
We can use that as an example. I wasn't around when it was, was here.
It's not my job either, so it's not a practice plan.
Did, um, did, did we do anything that worked?
Did a bond for an orchard for a large sewer. We didn't do anything, extend the facts of that. Once they have approval from the A B C, then we can apply on the specs and the bond.
I think that's all the people expect, right?
Yeah, cause a bond has to pay a premium every year. And so, I mean, a figure over fifty years, that's a, that's a lot more.
More than a bond.
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't wanna see you. You're the guys going down the wire and there, where they're gonna come back to you and say, we got a problem. What can we do to fix it? And these are the things that I'm trying to look at, how we can handle things. So you guys are not backed up in the corner, if you know what I mean.
In, in order to keep the speedies permits with the D E C, you have to be up to date with the paperwork. So that should not be a concern. If somebody's not up to date with the paperwork periodically, didn't get all the testing, the paperwork and the license operator, you lose your speedies permit.
That one.
Now, you both. You lose your speedies for the D E C.
Yeah, and there's a pixel there. And you know what happens?
People can't live there.
Yes, yes, yes. Eventually, if something's radically rolling, the D E C comes, they say, you gotta shut, fix it right away and shut it down.
Then you're conceptual.
Well, the, the D E C is not.
But it's, uh, no, but it could be, it could be fluing into our show right for, you know, but we can't, we can't put somebody there twenty-four hours.
And usually the water gets shut down. It, it, there's a, there's a process to it. It's, it's not, we, we never have a running sewer on the streets. Town of Fallsburg comes in, shuts down the water and, and they.
I got pictures on my phone where they were doing a project and they, what they did, where the contractor moved in, they, the black, the black schmutz had all the tanks was going down the ditch.
Yes, I see it too.
And then the deal is, whatever happened to that?
Paul, you have the same issues with projects that, you know, connect to the central sewer as well. There's always going to be, you know, circumstances where people aren't doing the right thing. We have to pay for the regulatory agencies of the town.
What I'm, what I'm trying to say, if there's ways to curtail these problems, so that code enforcement isn't pulling, he still has hair on his head, so.
One.
You know what I mean? I'm, I'm just trying to see how we can implement things so that things, things happen, you know? And that's it. And I'm gonna shut my mouth for.
Okay, okay. So where, where are we at now?
Okay. Yep, uh, move on to the rest of the conditions. We have the shall attain a bond. Um, the next set of conditions is during construction and prior to issuance of any certificates of occupancy, the applicant shall, one, maintain an existing vegetated buffer within the seventy-five-foot front yard setback along Carmel Jacobs Road and refrain from significant tree removal within that setback, except for construction of the proposed entry drive and stormwater management facilities. Sorry, that's a thing that the applicant had agreed upon. Um, the applicant shall adhere to the landscape and lighting plan, um, including planting a row of seventy-three green giant arborvitae uh, along the north and east perimeter of the project to shield it from public view and the installation of downward-facing dark side compliant lighting throughout the project. Those are all on the landscaping lighting plans. Uh, three, the applicant shall not construct any manufactured homes with fold or walkout basements. Only slabs on graved槽 spaces are permitted. Uh, five, uh, the applicant shall provide evidence that a certified lease or treatment plant operator has been contracted to perform all required maintenance, uh, testing and operation of the packaged sewer treatment plant facility in accordance with the needs permanent issued by the D E C. Um, I added, uh, prior to May first of every year, the applicant shall submit copies of any maintenance and operation contracts in effect. Daily maintenance reports submitted to the D E C and/or annual inspection reports for prior. Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
And then last but not least, this has already been addressed, but we wanted to memorialize it, is prior to issuance of a building permit, the developer shall purchase and provide the town with installed or skinned sign. So that's already been purchased, provided and installed, right?
Correct.
It's on there just, uh, and other than that, uh, it's just staff re, the standard staff review and, um, inspections during construction.
No.
Is there anything else that you think we could cover?
I got one thing with the, with the arborvitae trees.
Yep.
They shouldn't be planted in July or August because half of them will die and they'll never be replaced. So spring or fall.
With the recommendation of an arborist or something like that.
Yeah, but they don't, I see so many of these projects, I see so many trees they planted in August, they don't water it. And by September, they're dead. And they're dead next year too, and they're dead, you know? They don't, they don't, they should get a year guarantee on the trees or not let anybody plant them, you know, during the dry spell.
Alright, I get it.
That's, that's, that's all I got.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's our power.
Anything else that anyone can think of that we forgot? There's a lot there. Okay. So the site plan, um, resolution has all those conditions. Um, but again, I just wanted to state for the record that the original plan was an eighty-four unit manufactured home development on fifty-six acres. Um, the applicant acquired additional property, um, and proposed an eighty-six unit manufactured home development. Um, and then after feedback from, uh, the public hearing, he acquired even more property. So now it's basically the same number of units, eighty-six units on ninety-three, um, acres. It's permitted. All the zoning requirements have been, um, met. We had a public hearing. Declared your intent to serve as lead agency. You just did the met deck and that's it. There's a ready for people if there's nothing else.
Okay. So are you in motion? Motion for approval?
Motion.
Second?
I think the second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
I'm disappointed Mr. Katz isn't here. I know it's been a long hard.
He just got back from Europe.
Oh, okay.
So.
I can see the joy when you have to get.
I'll hear it when I call.
Do you want to turn on speakerphone?
Okay, next up, H C S Resorts Raleigh Hotel.
Good evening. Uh, Joel Conhey and, uh, Steve Bash with the team for H C S. Um, I guess we have, uh, we visited this site, uh, on every month for the last year, so.
Before we get to the next question, are there outstanding building violations now? Like building, well, built permits, yeah?
There was. They, they built a gazebo. My guy Jordan found it. So, but they came in, they paid their fine and took care of it.
They took care of it.
The only thing that we have outstanding is that the Venetian is complaining about sewer water they think is coming from there. It's actually coming down through there. So they're in the midst of having it tested and then we're gonna get the results for it. But they said that the D E C and other people have been there already and it's been proven nothing. So we'll see what happens. But Jordan said it did smell, but we don't know where it's coming from. So other than that, no, that's, you know, I went there and I took pictures for the board, but I forgot to print them out. I apologize. Because I know everybody, we were going back and forth about the parking lot and the, you know, the gate and everything like that. So, I mean, it's, you know, it's clearly marked the gate and it says no parking down, uh, in this parking lot after one thirty because it's a recreational area, you know, so they, they have an automatic gate that closes and it, you know, the traffic wasn't bad when I was there, you know, a lot of it coming into Venetian, you know, so.
I've been there twice since the last meeting and, uh, like I said, the same thing, you know, it was, it was, I mean, it is fenced off. There's an automatic gate, uh, which has been closed and when I was there, it was closed and, uh, people were actually playing those courts.
And they have security guards. I'm sorry.
I drove in there and there was six or seven, well, it wasn't six or seven, there was about four cars that pulled in from there that was going to the supermarket. I stayed there and made two or three phone calls and there's a lot of outsiders coming in, so I had to go to the room. What the deal is with that?
In terms of who the users are?
Yeah, there was outside.
I don't know that there's ID that's checked, but in terms of the marketing, what they're doing, it's supposed to be. And I think there's a condition in terms of post-approval that it's for the, uh, for the people that use the project. I mean, maybe people coming to go pray at the shul, what they drop in. This is not.
Sounds good. Let's move on. Get this all right. We are ready.
Um, we did receive a letter, um, that was requested to be put into the record. Um, I know we discussed it, um, from the neighbors, um, at Venetian. It's from their attorney's, Mogo. Um, I can read it.
Sure.
I'll try to do it as expeditiously as possible.
We're on time today, but you're breaking up.
All right. I will go as quickly as possible. Okay, so we represent the board of managers of the Venetian Villas condominium. Venetian has come to our attention that the planning board intends to take action upon the application of Human Care Services Inc. at your regular meeting to be held this evening, proving a supermarket currently built and operating without special permit and/or site plan approval and a mix-up. We have previously written and appeared before the board expressing our opposition to this application. We write to strongly urge the board to refrain from issuing this decision at today's meeting. We respectfully request that this correspondence be read into the record. As set forth in our prior correspondence to the board, copies of which are annexed for your convenience, Venetian is a residential condominium in the community in South Fallsburg comprised of one hundred and thirteen homes, where families reside or vacation to enjoy a peaceful and safe environment. Immediately adjacent to Venetian is the H C S campus, previously owned and operated by the Raleigh Hotel. Venetian and H C S are bound by the declaration recorded as instrument number twenty sixteen dash ninety-four thirty-nine in the office of the clerk of Solon County, which governs the shared use of sewer, roads or other infrastructure and was intended to allow each community to function without infringing on the rights of the other. The declaration also contains an arbitration provision to resolve disputes. Over the past year, H C S has acted in ways that have significantly disrupted its balance in addition to opening and operating a public supermarket while inviting the greater public to use easement intended for limited minor use. H C S has installed and used an outdoor amplified sound system for music and frequent public address announcements. These activities have intruded on the quiet enjoyment of Venetian's residents and have overburdened shared resources and violations of its declaration, local laws and ordinances. These violations prompted Venetian's commence an action in Solon County Supreme Court, Supreme Court to enjoin H C S's breach of conduct and compel H C S to arbitration. The court issued a tro, temporary training order on August thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and then January seventh, twenty twenty-five, an injunction prohibiting H C S's employees, agents and its contractors affiliates from acting in contravention of the declaration and from violating any applicable noise ordinances pending the outcome of court ordered arbitration. Despite the court's orders, H C S's activities have continued. An independent acoustical study conducted over a significant period of time has documented repeated exceedances of the town's daytime and nighttime noise limits. Daytime readings from eight AM to ten, ten PM regularly measured sixty-five to seventy-five decibels with a limit of sixty-five decibels for prolonged periods, while nighttime readings, which is ten PM to ten, or to eight AM, reached sixty-six decibels, wherein the limit was fifty-five decibels, including announcements and shouting past one AM. Noise was plainly audible well beyond fifty feet from the property line, including inside homes, more than a hundred and twenty feet from the property line. These readings prove that H C S has violated multiple provisions of the town code. Venetian's residents have no ability to avoid these disruptions. This is their home and their quality of life is being diminished in ways that declaration and the town's ordinances were intended to prevent. The injunction exists to preserve those rights while the arbitration process runs its course. Granted, H C S's current application would disregard that injunction, expand H C S's use of Venetian's easements without due process or just compensation, and create further legal and community conflict. H C S and Venetian are scheduled for court ordered arbitration session on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, at which expert testimony will be presented regarding these violations. There's no legitimate urgency to approve H C S's application before the arbitration concludes. Waiting until the dispute is resolved will allow the planning board to make a decision based on complete record without the risk of authorizing a use that is currently prohibited under court order. Approval at this stage would aid in that H C S's contempt of the court by authorizing conduct the Supreme Court has expressly prohibited undermine the judicial process by interfering pending arbitration and expose the town to avoidable legal challenges. Should the board nonetheless approve the application, our client will be compelled to pursue all available legal remedies, including an action in United States District Court for the Southern District of New York under forty-two U S C nineteen eighty-three for violations of the takings clause, due process clause of the United States and New York State constitutions, as well as proceedings under Article seventy-eight of the C P L R to null the board's determination as arbitrary, capricious and abusive discretion and made in violation of lawful procedure. Nothing in this letter shall be deemed, nor should it be construed as a waiver, relinquishment, relinquishment of any of Venetian's rights, claims or lawsuits, defenses, whether legal, equitable, contractual, statutory, otherwise all of which are expressed will be reserved. Venetian will take all steps necessary to protect its rights. It's gonna be interesting to the residents.
After that, take a five minute break. So what do you think? What are we supposed to do now?
Yes. And he sounds like, that's way the one.
Well, it's gonna, um, Steve, I don't know if you wanna give your position, so.
Your position, if everyone needed to take a go, but you know, that's our thing to do.
Well, let's, yeah, we'll hear, we'll hear both, uh, both positions and then we can discuss.
So I'm just going to go in order of substantive points that are alleged. Um, I'm not going to repeat the histories since I don't intend to bore everybody to tears and put them to sleep. So regarding the allegation about the outdoor sound system, there are no noise code violations. Uh, Venetian has made multiple complaints. Inspectors have come out, taken noise readings, and there have not been any violations issued. If you parse what is said, I, I know every lawyer does this. It's sometimes more important to see what is not said as opposed to what is said. So the one thing is, is that there is a statement made that there is a court order. Court order prevents my client from violating any applicable noise ordinance or ordinances pending the outcome of court ordered arbitration. Note, there are no violations issued. There's no violation of the applicable noise laws. Then there are allegations made regarding acoustical study, which has never been provided to anybody. I don't know who the independent acoustical expert was, but as you. I don't know who the independent acoustical expert was, but as it has been provided to anybody, it's how it has been provided to me. Doesn't say where the noise measurements were taken, or requirements, to where they are supposed to be taken. Then under the heading of what is not said, it says noise was plainly audible beyond fifty feet from the property line. There is not a requirement in the town code that says when you go beyond the property line of property during day or night, that silence is what is required, or a noise limits that are there, but there is something required besides this. So the fact that noise is audible is not a violation of anything, including inside homes. They say you have to be silent inside a home. So what is not said here is what were the noise levels at those places? Did they violate the noise code? And there isn't any allegation to that effect. Regarding the injunction, that the granting of an approval would violate the injunction, there is no injunction against the town, the planning board, or any town official, the building department, or anybody, anybody here on this board. If there was a violation of the injunction, the remedy is not to go to you and say, oh, please enforce our court order. That's not the way it works. If there is a violation of a court order, the remedy is you go to the judge who issued it and you say, your honor, these people violated your order, please hold me in contempt. There has never been a motion made for contempt, no allegation made that there's any violation of any court order. The, uh, there is no allegation, there's no legitimate urgency to approve HCS's application. I'm not doing a repeat now of all the allegations we're pending, but it takes time to construct a MICA, to put that stuff together. The idea is to have this in place before next summer, it's already going to be tight. So there is urgency to have this application approved. There is no use that is currently prohibited under the court order. It just simply says, don't violate the noise code. The, uh, an approval at this stage would aid and abet HCS's contempt of court. Well, if there is an allegation of contempt of court, you go to court and say, these people are in contempt of court, they have not done that. So I have no idea what Mr. Mogul was talking about in that regard. So, and then, of course, there's the, the end point, the threat of litigation. So I do not see any basis here for the board to delay its action. There is nothing here that has been alleged that this board has a duty, moral, legal, or otherwise, to get in midlife. Whatever the private disputes are between Venetian and HCS, they're going to be dealt with in arbitration. And whatever the court order is, is the only court to refuse. This is just simply a threat because Venetian doesn't like HCS, when Venetian board doesn't like Aaron O'Neal. Not quite sure who's who in that community, but it's clear that there's some serious bad blood. So they're threatening you in order to hurt HCS, and that's not right.
What about the night noise?
What about the night?
The noise at night?
The noise at night is not a violation, hasn't been any violation. All right, the noise code is not being violated.
That's good for a lawyer.
We've had, we've had noise measurements taken on the site by my client continuously during the summer. I said to them, please, these are the standards. And as far as I know, and as far as the town is concerned, there has not been a single instance of a violation of the noise code, or no violations outstanding.
So with all that said, the one, I guess hiccup we would have for tonight as far as an approval goes, um, I think the board can do the negative declaration tonight, but with the gazebo, that is a change to the site plan. So rather than.
I have a point to make about that if I can, though, okay?
Oh, yeah, I'll present it to them then. Yeah, so the, the gazebo does need to be on the site plan. So the recommendation I was gonna make is to, we, if the board feels comfortable, you can do the negative declaration, but as far as the site plan, I think the gazebo should be put on so that way it's not a situation where we have to have Steve and Joel come back in a month and present a new site plan with that amendment to it. Um, so that would be my recommendation, but.
So we, Joel and I looked at the code. The gazebo, which I think can be verified by town building, is approximately two hundred and eighty square feet. Under the town's code, the provision in three-ten dash seven-point-two subsection, sub-paragraph three, provides that no site plan is required when you have a new non-residential building of less than one thousand square feet of floor area. So, uh, I don't believe there is any requirement for an amendment to the site plan for this, but please take a look at the code, that's what we looked at. We just didn't see any requirement, um, for a site plan amendment. I would have brought it up to you earlier, but.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
To discuss this at the very beginning.
So let me ask you, Steve, if you, uh, could talk to these people, uh, somehow we could do away with the, uh, sound system altogether at night, then we don't have to worry about that?
I'm sorry.
The sound system at night, do away with it altogether. And I know if I lived next to them, I wouldn't want to hear it at ten o'clock at night.
I, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
What, night, night noise, they got a sound system?
Right, I, I don't, I don't believe that they're using that sound system.
I'd like to take note, note that, you know, they won't use it at night.
There are reasons why announcements have to be.
They don't need to be announced out loud at night, though.
But it's not violating.
It's not violating, but it gets to be a nice name.
I, I understand, but the code allows, the code allows loudspeakers to be utilized at night at a certain sound level. This is a place that has special needs children.
Special needed kids.
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't we put the sound system outside, inside the bunk, inside the bunk where all the kids are? We've done that while they can, they do it all the time with.
I understand, but I, but I can't, I can't.
You, well, they can.
No, I can't say to you in good conscience that you are acting within the scope of your powers by trying to prohibit something that the town code allows.
I'm just saying, ten o'clock at night, you don't need a loudspeaker going off, there's traveling through the woods. And it's even more trouble on at night because now it's quiet. I don't think it's necessary in town.
All I know is, is that the town board makes these decisions. They decide what is the law and everybody else has to follow it.
We can give you an option and say, this is what we're looking to have you do, if you want to move on.
It has to be within your own lines, sir, I'm sorry. The town board has said, what's allowed?
Okay.
You can't prohibit, but the town board says it's okay.
I just don't think they want to be good neighbors, sir.
Listen, my clients have done what I had directed, as we do. I was there personally to make sure it happened. We brought a sound person out there. We took the measurements of the, of the speakers that were used. They were not even measured at the property line. They were measured inside the property line at the fence so that there would be no doubt that by the time they got to the property line, that they would be at or below the levels that the code requires.
All right, what's on the property line now, a fence? Maybe you want to put trees in?
The fence, there are trees that are there.
How many trees, what have they got to block this down?
I don't know how many.
That's right. Yeah, I want a notification before you give me that. That's, that's my power. Huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
Listen, there are trees that are.
Okay, boom, we want more. That's my power.
Again, I.
I'm, I'm not looking hard either, I'm just saying, I'm looking to solve this problem.
They, they are not violating the law. You can put in as many trees as you want.
It'll cut the sound. It'll cut the sound.
Okay.
I don't know why they need a loudspeaker ten o'clock at night, that's all.
If there's a, a reason why an announcement needs to be made, because personnel need to be contacted, I'm not operational.
Emergencies?
Yeah.
Don't mean that. If you ha, if you have an emergency, you do what you gotta do, just like a fire siren going on.
I agree.
But this, uh, this, whatever, I, I, you know what? I'm gonna tell you right now the way I feel. Let's put this off for thirty days.
We, we did that last time. We put it off for thirty days.
That's my, that's my feeling, and if you wanna, you wanna board, you wanna ask the rest of the people? Yeah, yes, why don't we do this? Why don't we ask, why don't we say, what does the board think? Or do we just, uh?
What's gonna change?
How to bring up an approval vote and see if it's defeated, or what, what do we, devil, what, what do you think?
No, no, what is, what is going to change in thirty days? Nothing, you're gonna come back and you're gonna wanna do something with the sound system and, uh, you're gonna plant trees or something. Give me, give me a tree, uh, thing, I don't know. I just don't think it's right that the neighbors got a problem.
The, the neighbors.
I live next to a camp and every night they have a sound system inside of all their places. There's not one speaker outside.
Is it a special needs place?
By all means, everyone with special needs.
I haven't, I haven't.
If it's a special needs, they're inside the building, they're not outside in the middle of the field.
Listen, all that I can say to you is, is that you, you are the planning.
Hmm.
As far as I'm concerned, my job is to acknowledge and accept when the planning board is acting, it's really playing with its powers, but when the planning board is seeking to impose upon my client a standard that is, is superseding what the town board gave, it's not in accordance with the law, and to turn around and take the unsupported material that's in this letter that has no documents attended to it, no studies that have been submitted, to just turn around and accept it as true is not fair. There's been bad work here for a long time, and I don't know that just simply say because an attorney wrote a letter and doesn't provide any support for it at all, but based all allegations and starts raising things that should be addressed in court, why isn't it that my client is being made to suffer for that? If there was such a problem with all of this, why did they in the last year go into court and say they're violating this? That's what they're supposed to do, and they haven't done it. Instead, they come to you and say, please do me a favor, and I'll say in English, screw the other guy, because we don't want to go to court. That's not right, that's just not right.
But that's what I'm gonna say, the sound doesn't need a problem, right?
Okay.
But last month you said the noise level is at sixty-three.
Right.
They claim to sixty-five.
Okay. The noise level is different meters and read things differently. I don't know how they're calibrated. Yeah, so there can be all sorts of things happen. It's not like someone from high above turns around and has every meter read the same way. I don't know what their meters are calibrated for. I don't know who their person is that's doing it. I don't know what time they did it, I don't know where they took their measurements. That's all that I can tell from here, is that on a piece of paper, they say this is a violation. To me, that's kai-pa, it's nothing, okay? To me, the bottom line is, is you wanna turn around and say, my client is violating a court order? You pick your butt up, you go into court, you say it in an affidavit to a judge with evidence, and you prove it. That's what you do. You don't come to the planning board to say, please do my homework for me. Please do my work for me and hurt the other guy. That's not the way that the system works, okay? And now if I'm getting agitated, I'm getting agitated for a good reason, which is no, I'm not gonna stand by while my client gets turned around and vilified by somebody who doesn't go and do the process the right way. They got a court order, let them go in.
So why is the noise level?
I wish I asked my roommate.
Sorry. Noise levels shouldn't be at nine. Noise levels shouldn't be at nine, that's fifty-five.
Their stuff is not documented, it's just a piece of.
So very simple, the board, I'm asking you for one thing, if they want to take care of the sound system, I think you do that, I got no problem with the MICA. I think, uh, if not, then maybe we're gonna put more trees up, and we take care of it that way. But that'd be their choice.
You want a landscaping?
I just want, I just want the noise to be able, I mean, neighbors is, I want you to come up here and destroy the country. Not here, not here speakers out through your house.
I, I understand, but I don't know that people are hearing speakers throughout their house. You don't know that.
I'll go down there for a night and.
Well, I, I understand, but that's what this has been going on and on.
When they came here, what's the public, what's the public care when they came up with the biggest problem with the noise?
I understand, so has, has anybody from the town found a violation? Answer, no, not ever, and they've been complaining every day. Every day they complain.
I don't believe that one town official has been down there at twelve o'clock at.
I don't know when the town officials got.
There is.
Listen, I, I can't prove that.
If you show me that on record, then I'll believe it.
How about, how about believing what is documented? Is there a single documentation of any violation? Answer, no. How, so then why is it that we're assuming that my client is violating this? On what basis?
Because you already said you've got sixty-three percent of your thing. So that means that using a loudspeaker at night is traveling at night twice as much.
No.
Twice as much. That, that's my opinion, anybody else here, they can do what they want. So I'll be quiet for the rest of the night.
So I, I guess the, the final point, we had worked on draft resolutions. I sent them around, um, to Helen, Ken, TJ, Irv, and then I had Art on the email, who's supposed to be on vacation.
Yeah.
But he's apparently reading emails and read that one. He did wanna have more time to look at the site-specific conditions, which I think it, let's read those, discuss as a board, your comfort level with it. And then I think at that point, I mean, it's not my decision, it's not Steve's decision, and it's not Steve Mogul's decision what this court does tonight, whether you vote for it now, you do the neck deck and hold off until next month for the site plan. But I think that's, uh, you know, we, we can discuss the actual site-specific conditions, see what the comfort level is, you know, as far as changing them, because I think, I think we spoke about them and made the changes probably three hours ago. So let's review those, see what everyone's thoughts are, and then we can determine what to do from there.
Do you need to do a negative deck, I'm sorry? I'm, I'm just looking at Paul and I want everything.
So, um, with the site-specific conditions, what we have right now, we have, um, first one being outdoor PA system and speakers need to operate in compliance with the town code and permits will be required in accordance with the town code prior to June first, twenty twenty-six. The additions of the grocery store building and MICA have been approved as accessory uses to principal, to the principal use of the existing hotel on the property and shall be for the exclusive use of hotel guests and their families, Venetian Villa owners and their families, and those attending the shul at the property. Uh, the third and final site-specific condition is the parking lot on-site adjacent to the grocery store building and MICA additions shall not be used for recreation at times when any cars are occupying a lot. Similarly, the parking lot shall not be used for parking at times when it's in use for recreational purposes. So those are the three proposed site conditions. I don't know if you, I didn't print out copies, it's my bad.
And then, hey, Helen said something about getting landscaping around the black op, parking lot in court. Was that discussed?
Um, it was discussed and, uh, applicants, um, obviously argued that it wasn't. But it wasn't required.
So I'm just trying to, should we, uh, we put this up for a vote now and see what happens or what?
I would pull, pull the board, um, loading members to see, see if you feel comfortable voting on it tonight. Um, I would put it if you feel comfortable doing the neck deck.
Neck deck, I think we should do the neck deck because that is.
Yeah, I think.
I think we should do that.
I mean, absolute objection, I, I think that makes sense. And I would call the board as far as the site plan.
Yeah, what do we do, let's do the, let's do a motion for a negative deck violation. Anybody wanna make that motion?
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? No?
Well, so before we do that, we do need to, uh, sorry, the board needs to take lead agency.
Oh, okay, okay, so to make a motion.
For unlisted.
Make a motion for unlisted action lead agency. Somebody wanna make that motion? Okay, Paul, second?
Take it.
Second, okay. All in favor of that? I don't hear anything, I don't hear anything. No? Okay.
Anyone?
We're not gonna vote on it tonight. If we can't get that, that, we're not gonna vote on the others.
Yeah, we have to, the neck deck would have to be done prior to site plan approval, so we would, would need that vote to occur first, just to demonstrate that there's no environmental impacts.
So. Yep, we'll have to, sorry, we'll have to reschedule the next meeting and see what happens.
That's it, nothing else to say?
Okay. Okay, we got one more item on the new page. Lakeland Estates requests a law law improvement in Lakeland Drive of Brook Court. Lakeland Estates requests a lot law improvement in Lakeland Drive in Brook Court.
So, this is Lakeland State's property, some of it. It's owned by Howie Ingram. Here's the address number, too. Lakeland Drive, Brook Road. Right now, the orange is a lot, and the yellow on both sides straddling all this is lots. There's two tax-and-a-half lots. What we like to do is just take this line here, move it to the road. So, what we're left with is the pink and the blue. That's all this is. He has a deal to sell this to the fishing and boating club. So, that's the whole thing. The, so right now, the orange is 3.68 and the yellow is 5.25. Once we do the lot line change, or lot improvement, whatever you want to call it, the pink is 5.54, and this is 3.39.
What is it now, 6.28?
Right now, it's 3.68 and 5.25, and we're changing it to 5.54 and 3.39.
So, might you mind answering a question?
I guess.
What did you say? There's a parcel in between that one and the rest of the property that the fishing club owns.
This Brook Road?
Uh, no, it's to the south. It's basically at the end of Lakeland Drive, there's Lakeland. Yeah, so you see the one, no, right below, yeah. That's owned by Howie Ingram.
No, it's owned by Owen Bruski.
Oh, okay.
He owns further down that way, he owns like a piece of that one, and it's a lot, but that's not part of this.
Well, that's what I was asking, because that's the parcel that's in between that and the rest of the fishing club holdings. Do you know if there was any...
I think he's in work trying to sell that to them as well.
Okay, that was my question, because then it would be a contiguous, like basically, all around the lake.
They've been going back and forth on that, like a year of price.
Okay, gotcha. And this eliminates, there was a prior application for a subdivision on...
Yeah, originally, yeah, that's gone now.
Gotcha, but there still could be the possibility...
The other property owns up this way, closer to like the girl's pizza shop there, that might still come back.
But the other property that would be combined into one lot on the other side of Lakeland, that could, you know, if he has any plans to...
He's trying to sell it, he's trying to sell it, but...
He's trying to sell it.
Yeah, his only reason he's doing this is because they just want these parcels that are by the lake.
Gotcha. That's on hand.
Okay, so, this is a type 2, right?
This is a type 2 action, correct?
So, we don't have to have a public hearing?
You have to waive it, technically.
Okay, we need a motion to waive the public hearing.
Motion.
Second, anyone? Okay, all in favor? Okay, so now, we need a motion to approve this?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Is that it, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, okay. Is that it? That's it, right?